Welcome to the Board's December 4 reorganizational meeting. Each December, the Board actually goes through a process of reorganizing, or potentially reorganizing, and elects a new chairman, vice chairman, committee assignments, sets their meeting calendar for the year, and a few other miscellaneous items. And so, without further ado, we'll go ahead and get started with the Board's December 4 reorganizational meeting. And at this time, I will ask and open the floor up for nominations for chairman.
Second.
Motion and a second for Commissioner Lohman. Any...
I'd like to make a motion for Commissioner Barbie.
We also have a nomination for Commissioner Barbie. We have two nominations, one for Commissioner Lohman, one for Commissioner Barbie. So I think what we'll do is act on each of them. And so we'll... Are there any, I guess before I close nominations? Are there any other nominations for chairman? Hearing none, we'll close nominations. And so we'll just take each of them one at a time. And we'll start with Commissioner Lohman, since that was the first one that was nominated. And so, all in favor of Commissioner Lohman as chairman, raise your hands. See, that's four for the clerk. Opposed? Three against.
And since we have four, for Commissioner Lohman, that would mean that Commissioner Lohman is the chairman for the 2020 year... December meeting until next December. So Chairman Lohman, I'll term the meeting over.
This brings us to the election of vice chairman. I'll open the floor for nominations for vice chairman.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Barbie.
Second.
Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Scott Efferd.
I don't think nominations need a second. Yeah, so, any other nominations? Do I have a motion to close the nominations? All those in favor of my Barbie, please raise your hand. All those in favor of Scott Efferd, please raise your hand. Congratulations, Vice Chairman Barbie. We need to approve bonds for public official bond, which the finance officer being Toby Hinson, we need to approve a million dollar bond, which expires June 30, 2024. And we need to approve a $5,000 bond for Sheriff Jeff Crisco, which will expire December 2, 2024. What's the pleasure to board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve those two bonds. Finance Officer Toby Hinson for a million dollars to expire June 30, and for Sheriff Jeff Crisco, $5,000 expire December 2, 2024.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Hatley, second to motion. All in favor of those bonds, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. This time, I'd like to open the floor for appointments of commissioners to the boards that we all have. And I think there's a slate of board assignments. If someone would be willing to read that off, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Commissioner Efferd, Commissioner Shudo to Economic Development Commission. We appoint Commissioner Crump and myself to Consolidated Human Services. We appoint myself to Library Board of Trustees. We appoint Chairman Lohman and Commissioner Hatley to Airport Authority. Myself to Fire District Commission Chairman. Commissioner Barbie to Senior Services Board. Commissioner Shudo, Commissioner Efferd to the RPO. Commissioner Barbie, Commissioner Hatley to the Stanley Water and Sewer Authority. Commissioner Crump, Chairman Lohman to Central Island Council of Governments. Mr. Lohman will be the alternate in that. Commissioner Efferd to Partners Mental Health Board. And Commissioner Hatley to Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Do we have a second?
Quick discussion. I don't know if you need to clarify that Scott would be, Commissioner Efferd would be the alternate on the rural planning. And Trent would be the alternate on the water and sewer. Because I don't know if they were mentioned.
That is correct, yeah.
So does that have to be corrected by motion, I think?
I think... We're okay. So we just need to vote. Okay. All in favor of those board assignments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The only thing I want to say is that we're all elected by the citizens of Stanley County. And it's very important that if you're assigned to a board, that you attend those meetings. If you see for some reason you cannot attend, contact another commissioner and see if you can get someone to take your place. And from time to time, it would be good to hear about the meetings that you attend. Like the fire marshal, love to hear about what's going on sometimes. The health department, same thing. Airport Authority. So I just wanted to say that, that we need to attend those meetings if you're assigned to a committee that's having a meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Could I ask Tyler to send us a meeting schedule for all the meetings, especially for the new committees? I mean, I know when some of them meet, but some of them I don't. Could you send that to us? Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we need to establish the meeting dates for 2024. The Board will meet on the first and third Monday of each month, except for the months of May, June, July, August, September, and December. And at that time, the meeting will be held at 6:00 PM. And the proposed meeting schedule is as follows. January 2, that's a Tuesday. And Tuesday, January 16. Those are the meetings for January. On Monday, February 5, and Monday, February 19, or February, or March. Monday, March 4, and Monday, March 18. Monday, April 1, and Monday, April 15. Then we're going to have a meeting on Monday, May 13. Monday, June 3, Monday, July 8. Monday, August 5. And Tuesday, September 3.
I can say that's my birthday, so I expect to party.
Well, Commissioner Efferd, my birthday was the last meeting we had, I think. So we'll celebrate. We'll celebrate. We'll celebrate for you on your birthday. I need a motion to approve those dates. Oh, there's more. Flip the page.
I make a motion to approve the date.
Wait just a second. Yeah. Yeah. All right. Yeah. It's on the next page. Monday, October 7, and Monday, October 21. Monday, November 4, and Monday, November 18. And Monday, December 2. And the reason we're scheduling a couple dates in January is because New Year's falls on, I mean, we've got a Monday, which is January 1, New Year's Day. And then Martin Luther King holiday is Monday, January 15. So therefore, we reschedule those. We've also rescheduled due to Labor Day on Monday, September 2. Now, everybody's heard the dates. You've got the same paper in front of you that I have. I need a motion that we approve those dates.
I make a motion, we approve those dates.
First and second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. There is an announcement that I need to read. It says during regular meetings of the boards, the county commissioners, in order to act in their capacity as the Board of Governors for the Greater Baden Water and Sewer District, or for the Piney Point Water District, may at their discretion recess a commissioner regular meeting and reconvene as the Board of Governors of either of the two entities that are above in order to conduct business matters relating to those entities. That's just an announcement that I needed to make. We're through the reorganization meeting. So it is time, let's see here. It's time that we have an invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm gonna call on Commissioner Crump to do that.
Thank you. Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. And we thank you for this time together to serve our county. We thank you for this season, this season of hope. And I pray that you will help us all slow down and really reflect on the real reason of the season and to enjoy the joy that you've put in front of us. Tonight, Lord, just be with us as we are reviewing the business of the county. Help us to make good, sound decisions for the betterment of the county. And we just thank you. Be with us as we go into the week, Lord. Amen. Please stand and join us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is sand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe all the commissioners have reviewed the agenda. And at this time, I'm going to ask, will there be any adjustments to the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
First and a second to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The first item of this agenda is public comments. And we have four people that have signed up for public comments. And some of these, well, if you signed up to speak pro or con on some zoning issues, I'm gonna ask that you wait until we get to that particular item, because we will have what we call a public hearing, which will give you the opportunity to speak. And I know Tommy Curly, Charlotte Behringer wanted to talk about land. I'm not sure if it deals with any of the items that we're talking about tonight. Randy Malden's here, and I know you're here to talk about a rezoning issue. And Shane Allman wanted to speak about land. Shane, or I'm gonna ask, Tommy, is yours in particular to any zoning requests that we have? Or is it just a general statement?
Yeah, it's concerning land across the road from me down there off of Swearingen Road.
Okay. That will be coming up next, which I'll give you the time to speak. How about Charlotte?
Same thing.
Same thing, okay. And Randy, you're gonna wait until we do the zoning issue for you. And Shane? Same thing, okay. Let's move to item number two. And Bob Rimsburg, our Planning Director, will be the presenter.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Good to see you and congratulations in getting the reorganization behind you. I know that's always a challenge. Let me get this screen back open. Give me just a second on that. We do have two rezoning cases before you this evening. Our first case is ZA 23-10. Request from Martha Ingold to rezone 4.2 acres, tract on Harmony Road from RA Residential Agricultural to R20 Residential. We received this request about a month and a half ago. Parcels of land that are zoned RA lie within the rural preservation area, as you know, are required to have at least three acres or larger now when subdivided unless it is an exempt subdivision. Her property does lie in both of the rural preservation area and the RA zoning district. Therefore, the three acre minimum lot size requirement does apply to her property. She's not able to further subdivide the 4.2 acre parcel unless she could transfer it to a part of it, to an immediate family member. And even that is at the borderline, I believe, of size. Ms. Ingold subdivided the tract on the north side of Harmony Road into eight lots. Let me just, I'm gonna go ahead to the slide here. You can see the image, which of course you have in your packet as well, I believe. And still owns several of those lots on the north side of Harmony Road. She indicated to staff when applying for the rezoning that she wished to do the same thing on the 4.2 acre parcel. In other words, to divide into seven or eight lots to kind of match the north side. There is no access to public utilities in this area. Therefore, the parcels would require both well and septic systems. There has been, to this date, no environmental health assessment completed on the 4.2 acre parcel. All the surrounding parcels are also zoned county RA. The property is approximately 1.15 miles from the secondary growth area and 1.95 miles from the primary growth area as identified in the land use plan. I'll show you that slide in a minute. This is 2.6 miles from the city limits of Norwood. R20 zoning district does not allow for mobile homes. It only allows for site-built or modular homes. The minimum lot size would be 20,000 square feet if R20 is approved. Lots on the north side of Harmony Road are approximately 21,000 square feet, which met the minimum lot size when they were created back in 1994. The Planning Board heard concerns from two adjoining property owners who did not wish to see additional homes in the area. Mr. Shane Allman, who's here tonight, expressed concern about maintaining the goals of the land use plan to preserve farm areas and the risk of setting precedent for similar future rezoning requests. After a brief discussion, the Planning Board did vote unanimously to recommend that the request to rezone to R20 be denied because this was located in a rural preservation and of course has no public utilities for the smaller lots. Traffic counts, of course, minimal in this area. There's not a traffic count for Swearingen Road. The nearest one is on Matt Neal Road back in 2016, which reported 600 vehicles a day. And Cooper Road with 2015 with 450. So a couple of comments or thoughts on this. And this, of course, that just outlined the basic information I just shared. Harmony Road, though, is a 30-foot private right-of-way. The new lots would be about 180 feet deep, the way that is. And let's see. And it said no soil evaluation's been performed. Yeah, the ones on the north side are a little shallower, the way it's laid out. So I think they're only 100, they're about 130 feet wide and 165 feet deep. Couple of things, obviously, almost everything in the area is zoned RA. Just a little bit of neighborhood business up on Porter Road. And everything, again, the whole area is in the rural preservation area. I believe that takes us to the next one. So the, now, I know Ms. Ingold's gonna speak in just a minute. In her presentation at the Planning Board, she mentioned, because we talked about, you know, she could potentially leave this to family members or do something differently. And she mentioned at that meeting about dividing into just three lots. Well, that was not what we were approached with when we came before the Planning Board. So, because we were looking at eight lots. If it was just three lots, you could potentially rezone it to R40 or do a conditional rezoning that would outline and actually create the lots. But that was not part of what we were considering before the Planning Board at that time. So just to kind of have that in the back of your mind and then see what Ms. Ingold presents to you. I'll be glad to answer any questions that were, try to help out.
Just to be, just to be clear, you're talking about the part that it says Ingold property? That's the part that they want to be subdivided?
The southern, the southern section there.
And all the other parcels right there, she could put the places in there?
Well, that's a good...
Right now, or what's the deal with that?
If, and you may ask her about this, I don't have all the details on each of those parcels. My understanding is a couple of them did not support septic systems. She owns several of those lots, including a couple that have houses on them.
Any other questions?
Do you think that the, I know this is hypothetical, but would the Planning Board look at it differently if it was three lots instead of eight lots? Do you think that Board would look differently upon this? Or could it go back to them to look at it that way? Or would she have to reapply for everything?
Well, we might ask county attorney about this. But that's a lesser zoning impact. So it might be better to send it back to the Planning Board to consider that if that was the case. Of course, that's another, it will be two months down the road before we come back to you. But being a lesser, you know, less intense than what she requested, usually that means you could potentially proceed with that as a Board. But I'll defer that, maybe misform that. Sorry about that. Put you on the spot. It is a lesser density. So anytime you decrease the density, it's usually not, not, it's not as big a deal as it would be if you decided to make it, I don't know, R10 or something and really increase the size of lots. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Quick question. If she had had immediate family members, would she be able to do what she was requesting to do?
No. The only way to divide the, being 4.2 acres, if it's, and I get the calculator out, but 60,000, remember, it's gotta be 60,000 square foot's the minimum lot size to be given to an immediate family or sold to an immediate family member. The remainder situation would be, you'd need three acres left behind. So you're really closer to an acre and a half, four and a half acres before you can divide. No, I don't believe so. The scenario that you still have to face is that you have to have a remainder lot of three acres. So that's, that's the challenge. So basically, you can think less than four and a half acres. But the only way to divide it is to leave it in your estate, pretty much, or be ordered by the court somehow to do it that way.
We spoke last time when we were doing this, that if somebody owns two lots side by side after it's sit there dormant so long, it merges back to one lot, doesn't it?
It, again, it gets kind of complicated. But yes, if you have two vacant lots side by side that are substandard lots, then they do need to be put together to make it one lot. Yes, that's correct.
What is considered a substandard?
Anything below three acres.
So in theory, these two lots she's got open there could ultimately be put back as into one lot?
The, like the lots on the north side of Harmony Road, if they're side by side and vacant, then that prob, since they're currently in the same name, then they would need to be combined before she could construct something on either of those lots.
What's the timeline, Bob, of that reverting back if they sit dormant?
It happened when you approved the three acre, I mean, that's always been the case. If you have two vacant lots that are side by side. It's a little complicated. We were usually running into this on lakefront lots in the past. It's gonna, of course, be more common now in the rest of the county.
Other questions?
Thank you.
I'm gonna declare that the public hearing be open. And if anyone's here to speak for this rezoning, please come forward. Tell us your name, where you live, and keep your comments if you would, to three minutes or less.
I didn't want eight lots on this property. I wanted to go in three. They told me about 60,000 square feet per lot, and that would work for me. And to all the county commissioners, I appreciate you trying to understand how I feel and why I'm determined to keep my land. And I will not ever let a farmer be owning it. But I have been good to the farmers that live around it. And they are not up here trying to get me not to do nothing. I had a lady, I begged her for five acres, $10,000, 20 years ago, before I bought any of this land. She came and offered me the land about two years ago. And I told her, no, give it to Jody Dennis, who's a farmer and a good friend. He's always treated me good, and I've always treated him good. And I told her, let Jody have the land because it joins my land on the left-hand side. So I tried to not get my family involved because they said I could put it in my family's name. Three lots, 60,000 square feet a lot, which, if there's plenty of land for that. So I still won't, I don't want to cause problems. So I've made my will. I don't want to change it. But until I die, I would like to do what I want to do with my land, what I own, what I've worked for. And all the people against me, they don't own one inch of this land. So I still want to divide it into three lots, like I was told I could do at the beginning, the 60,000 square feet lots. And I think I deserve that. I paid tax on it for all these years, and I bought it. And I let Jody have five acres for $10,000 because I told him. A couple of years ago, it was, and that's a good buy on five acres. And I said, Jody, just give, just, I told the woman, even though I've tried to get it 20 years ago, I said, let Jody have it. So I'm not against the farmers. But I don't intend this land to ever be farmed. It don't matter if I live or die, it's gonna be fixed to where it will not be farmland, ever. Because that's how I feel. I've worked for it, paid for it, paid taxes on it. And I would like to be treated like a person ought to be treated. And I think I deserve it for all the work I've done and all the things I've done trying to make a living with a husband that was handicapped. He had stroke at 45, laid all the bricks in Norwood for Nick Page. Had a stroke at 45. I paid to take care of him, and I took care of what I could. I paid to take care of him, and I took care of what I kept him what time I did and paid somebody. So I think, me living and being on my age, people might think, well, she might die any time, which is true. But while I'm living, I want to do what I want to do. And I hope y'all understand that that ought to make sense because I paid for this land, and anybody against me hadn't paid for one inch. And that's all I can say.
I would like to speak just a minute. My name is Gina Smith, and I spoke at the last meeting of the county commissioners, and we appreciate everybody's help in trying to resolve this issue. But as I said at the county commissioner meeting last time, this was approved in September, and I know it's been in discussion for the past couple of years, but Martha, we, we told you about her being sick over the last four years, and specifically in March when she was so sick and we thought she was going to die. And, you know, we had no idea that this was happening, and if she had known, we would have helped her, even though she was so sick, to get this accomplished before the decision was made for the three acres. And I understand protecting agriculture, we want to protect agriculture, but it's four acres, and nobody is really going to farm four acres. So we're just going to, just respectfully ask, as we have done before, that you please allow her land to be rezoned so she can use it as she sees fit. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have some that I know that would like to speak against this. So, Tommy Curley, you'd come up, tell us who you are, where you live, and keep your comments to three minutes or less, please.
My name is Tommy Curley. I own that land right across the road from it, and we've been having problems with our water. That is our main concern, is if they boil wells over there, hitting our water table. Well, I've got the farm over there, and I have to water animals. And I've had trouble for the last two or three weeks with my water already. So I'd like to see it continue to stay as it's on and already is. But I appreciate you, Tom.
Thank you. I'd like to call on Charlotte Behringer.
I own the property, all of this here. We are having septic issues also. We are downhill. They've dug out and cut out some trees, and when their sewer, we found toilet paper in our yard, only one time last week. But then our water is brown. If she burrs more wells, she's already said that her wells are over 300 feet deep. I have to do a whole brand-new well, because ours is only 200 feet deep. So they're already using all the water that are, you know, if she gets more, we're going to be out. I'm just worried about septic overflow. If you has three more septic tanks out there, and they all come down and then come into my yard, ugh, sorry, just the thought of it. But, and then the water, and then you've already zoned it for what it's supposed to be, why change it now? She had opportunities before to build and do what she's had to do and wait till after you do it and then want to do something about it. That's just, that's too much. And we already have trailer parks across the street. There are already nine trailers across the street from on this side, and 25 over here. You know, three, four more, five more, eight more houses, that's, we got out in the country to be in the country, not to be surrounded by so many houses. Thank you.
Thank you. Shane Alman.
Shane Alman, a couple of months ago, y'all voted for the three acres for rural preservation, and y'all made a commitment to Stanley County residents, and I expect y'all to keep that commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that is not signed up that would like to speak for or against? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners, you've heard from Bob Rimsburg, you've heard from Ms. Razengal, Ms. Smith, and the others that have spoke against it.
If, if I may, I just, two quick clarifications. One, Mr. King, you were, you were correct, I think, with, Ms. Klein and I commiserated just back there for a minute, and, and about the, she probably could divide it among family members into three, three 60,000 square foot lots. That potentially is, if she sells her gifts that, because she's not living on that, if she was on the parent track issue. That's a kind of very confusing issue, but just wanted to clarify that for one thing. And we've also kind of done a little quick consulting here. Being a significant change, it's probably better to send it back to the planning board if you wanted to consider something R40 or, or conditional or something different than what was originally requested and advertised. Just a clarification.
If it gets turned out here tonight and we don't send it back, she could still reapply for the?
She could reapply, and we might, we might look at that as well, just as a, as a continuation, especially if you send it back, we'll look at it as just a continuation of this case, but with changed parameters.
And the way, the way that it's approached with the family members, if you did it with the family members, it puts a two-year clause in there before it can be sold, is that correct?
Uh, let's see, clause of two, what? Three years, three-year clause, three clause, before it can be sold outside of the family, right.
But would, if it were sold outside the family within, after three years, would the purchaser be able to build a house?
Yes. Yes. Because it would be, it would technically be a non-conforming lot, but it's a created lot, it's an existing lot, yeah. And now the only catch would be if somehow that person bought two lots side by side and they were both still vacant. That goes back to that other rule we were talking about a minute ago. Then they have to put those two lots together, but that's, that would be an odd scenario.
And the lots would have to perk?
Always.
And 60,000 square feet is the relative minimum part, minimum lot size, which is 1.3?
Eight-five, I think, or 358 acres.
Close to 1.4, yeah, okay.
That's correct.
I think, clarification, I've spoken to you on the phone. You do not have many relatives left, do you?
I don't have any children left or my husband left. If I had my little girl that died four years ago left, I could put every bit in her name, and it would be a breeze. It would be a breeze, because it could be three lots, I could give it to my daughter, and that would be the end of it.
You have nieces, nephews?
Sister-in-law.
Yeah.
I would like to say that Gina and Tony have my will, and that's the only people I would put the end of the land, but I'd have to go see a lawyer, which I would, to make sure that they knew that it would wind up where I am wanting to go, it will be all given to charity the once I die. That's in my will, and I ain't going to change nothing.
Yes, sir, Ms. Commissioner Eifert.
Bob, if, don't run off, wait a minute. If, if, if nothing happens tonight and she does put it in her will, that's a stipulation where she could divide that up, correct?
Yes, any, yeah, any, any state, that's, yeah, that's an exception by state statute.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Hearing no other questions, what's the pleasure of the board?
I just have a comment, which is not a
Go ahead.
Question. You know, sometimes I think we kind of rush through things, and I think this changing of the zoning land, they kind of rush through. I remember just picking it up in the summer and talking to them, just wanting to get everything done so fast. And I know when some of us talked about this, when you do something like this, you put the parameters in place, things sometimes fall through the cracks. Because all land out there is not farmland, and then if you feel that, you know, property rights and you feel the freedoms for people to do on their property within reason, you know, we kind of limited when we did that vote for what people could do with their property. And we have a circumstance here where she has no relatives that she could pass it off to, so she's at a disadvantage to people who actually have relatives that they could put it off to. And I would hope we could come up with something to make this work. And it's not like she came here tonight and this is something she planned after we did this. This is something you've been thinking about for years, and, you know, so that's, that's just, I hope we could come up with something to compromise. Because I said, it's not, I know y'all worried about the land and everything, it's not something that, hey, I want to build 20 houses here or whatever.
Is there a motion that any commission would like to put on the floor?
Yes, I have just one question to Bob real quick. So basically, she's asking for how many lots tonight? Not tonight?
Tonight, three.
Three, but what did the, what did the zoning board approve? They approved zero. What did she ask for at the zoning board?
When we met initially, it was to reflect what was on the north side of the road, so that's why we approached it as R10.
That was like an aid.
That, yeah, seven, eight lots, right. But, but at the planning board, Ms. Ingold did mention the potential for three lots, so that, that came up, but the board went ahead and voted on to recommend not approving R20.
I would like to make a motion that perhaps we send this back to the zoning board and look at it being split up into three lots.
We have a second.
I'll second.
First and the second. Yes, sir. Go for it. Go for it, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Just one quick question. I talked with Ms. Ingold several days before we went to the five-acre discussion, and she was supposed to come down and talk to you the next day. And I don't know whether she did or not, but then we got it postponed another two weeks to drop it back to the three acres. So there was about two and a half weeks there that she ever tried to attempt to speak to you about any of this?
And I, I don't recall that, but I know, I know, obviously, we, we talked, it wasn't very long after that, I know we did talk, so I'm not sure. I, I don't recall talking to her before the five-acre, three-acre change.
That's when I, that's when I spoke to her, she was supposed to come down and see you the next day, and that was before we went on.
And she may have, I don't, I just, I don't have a recollection. Sorry, I don't, I don't recall.
Any other comments before we vote? And the motion is to return it to the planning board.
Planning board with consideration for splitting it into three lots instead of the eight.
Okay, and we have a second for that motion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed, six, four sending it back to the planning board for consideration of three lots. Okay, thank you. The next item we have is another zoning request, CR23-03, Randy Malden, US 52 and Carter Road, and the presenter is Bob Rimsburg.
One more case for you. Randy Malden has made a request for rezoning a .73-acre parcel located at the southeast corner of Carter Road and US 52 here in Albemarle from R20, which is residential, to a conditional district for operation of a mini storage facility. This, as I say, is currently zoned R20. Its access will be from Carter Road, which has about 600 vehicles per day. US 52 has about 15,000 vehicles per day in that section. Mr. Malden has contracted to purchase the property from Cheryl Davies. The property is currently wooded and has recently been subdivided along with other lots on Carter Road. It's kind of a road, you'll see that on the map in just a second. Properties nearby are zoned, and of course, RA. The Albemarle city limits are approximately 325 feet south of this property, and in the city limits, those areas are zoned R10, which is their basic residential district, Light Industrial District, LID, and General Howie Business District. It's located in a primary growth area per the land use plan, and it would have to agree, comply with some agreed-upon conditions. What Mr. Malden has proposed is a mini storage facility with up to 48 various storage, size storage garages. There would be a vegetative or opaque fence buffer separating any adjoining residential lots unless waived by adjoining property owner. Areas along Carter Road would be landscaped with plant beds containing shrubs and small trees as required for the perimeter parking in sections 419 of the ordinance, zoning ordinance. Entrances and site distance meet all NCDOT requirements, including a paved apron to prevent gravel from entering Carter Road. A single monument-style sign would be permitted up to 64 square feet, not to exceed 10 feet in height. No flags, banners, or other temporary signs for this business shall be used for more than 15 consecutive days. Exterior lighting for roadways and storage units shall be full cutoff style fixtures. That means that light doesn't go up, it stays down, and ideally doesn't spread to other lots adjoining. Exterior colors should be neutral tans and greens to blend with the natural environment, and any fencing installed shall be maintained in good condition. No storage of motor vehicles, watercraft, RVs, or campers are allowed. Mini storage structures shall be set back 30 feet from 52 and Carter Road right-of-way and 15 feet from south and east property lines. And the view of this, the parcel here labeled Malden there, you can see US 52 north-south and Carter Road going off to the northeast there. Auto Drive is just south of this, there is a, a house in between this property and Auto Drive. The Auto Drive properties, and I think this will show up on the next slide, well, coming up. So this is the wooded lot, a little closer view, it was a five-lane section of US 52 along there. And this is the zoning in this area. So I'll get the mouse here, and you'll see, this is, this is the lot, the Malden lot, we're circling the mouse now, there at the corner of Carter and 52. But you can see across the road is Howie Business, down the road is M2, the industrial, which of course is H&amp;K Body Shop, and, and that east Albemarle, Texaco, or towing has their facility there. General, County General Business District down here, and then, of course, you jump down a little bit further south of Holt Road, you pass the development on Holt Road, you get, housing development, you get to the Light Industrial and other commercial properties in the city. The tan properties here, this is, this is our R20 district, the green properties across the road, across 52 is RA district. So that kind of gives you an idea. Again, it's all in a growth area, kind of spread that way out, and you can see what's in the city is, is, or in the very northern part of this map, what's in the town of New London are, doesn't show a growth area or whatever, but that's because they're in the city limit. But the pink area is kind of, that's a, a primary growth area, and this is in that primary growth area. And I believe that's it. Oh, this is, actually, this is the outline for the layout for what he's proposing on the lot. It might be worth noticing, the entrance, which is on Carter Road, of course, is set back about as far as it could go from the intersection with US 52, which, of course, DOT would prefer that. It's almost directly across from a driveway for a house that's across the street. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Rimsburg?
And it is a conditional zoning, so these conditions run with the property. This is, you know, we could have zoned it Howie Business or something like that, but this would mean that only a mini storage facility could be at this location. It couldn't be anything else unless someone comes and asks for a rezoning to change it to something new.
Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome, thank you.
This does require a public hearing. This does require a public hearing. I declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for this zoning request?
Good evening, Chairman and fellow commissioners. For those of you I don't know, I'm Randy Malden. I do live in the city of New London. I do have this zoning request. Before you, before I get started, I would like to thank Mr. Remsberg and Ms. Bailey for their professionalism over the last several months. Didn't know what I was doing, and they were very helpful through this process. As was presented, I do have this under contract. I have requested for this to be rezoned conditional used instead of Highway Business. I do think that this fits in to the surroundings based on this being on a five lane road on a corner lot. I understand there have been other mini storage facilities turned down over the last six months or years. I do think this is different based on it being on a five lane road on a corner lot. As was presented in the map, I do own the property just to the east of this, down Carter Road. Across the street on Highway 52 is Highway Business. Just one parcel over is H&amp;K Auto, which is heavy industrial. And also on the other side of it is general business. In my opinion, this does fit in to the surroundings, does fit into the neighborhood. Furthermore, headed north on 52, from let's say the connector to New London, there aren't many intersections that does not have at least one commercial piece on at least one of those intersections. I do think this is a reasonable request. Again, I appreciate your time. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Malden?
Actually, how many units would be in there?
The maximum will be 48.
Okay. About the storage industry, I know some people in the past have expressed concern of all the traffic it brings. Can you tell a little bit about the industry? I mean, do people go every day, or they just put this stuff there and park it for like long periods of time for extra storage? Or is it not as much as some people say it is for traffic?
I don't have any data to back this up. My family's been in the industry on a small scale for probably 30 years. Rarely when I go by any of these facilities do I see anybody there. In my opinion, most of the time, you drop something off, you may go back three months later, six months later. But I do not have any data to back that up. Mr. Shido.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for Mr. Malden. Mr. Malden, on the conditional, proposed conditional use of that, number two says that vegetative or opaque fence buffer will separate any adjoining residential lots unless waived by the adjoining property owners. Are you the adjoining property owner?
Going down Carter Road?
Going down Carter, but not to the back?
Not to the back. So going south, there wouldn't need to be a fence going south on 52.
Are those, any trees between those property owners that you could possibly leave?
Probably not.
You had to take them out and then put some type of a buffer back?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
No, I think that's Randy, it and that Rod, Rod Pex.
No, there's one house prior to Rod.
Okay, that's right. There's one house.
Any other questions? Okay, we still have a public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak against this zoning request? Don't see anyone, so I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve the conditional, conditional zoning request.
Second. And we have a first, and we have a second. Commissioner Hatley?
Yes.
Okay.
Andy.
I think it's on page 22, if you all, if that, if that, the approved motions, I think that would make county attorney, please.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something while he's looking for that?
Sure.
I don't have a problem with it. The only, the only issue I have is, again, number two, about the vegetative or opaque fencing buffer will separate any adjoining residential lots unless waived by the adjoining property owners. I would like to see that in there. And I don't think a property owner would want to waive it, but if we could, I don't know if we can change that, or if that's, I like the conditions where you put it up and you don't worry about, I can't say it that way. Just, I like for it to be, and put up.
Go ahead and make the motion the way you want it.
Yeah.
Scott, go ahead and make that motion the way you'd like to, and I'll second that.
Hold on just a second. We got a first.
Yeah, you already got.
And a second motion. I need either you all to withdraw it.
I'll withdraw.
I'll withdraw.
And, okay. First motion's withdrawn.
All right. I hope this don't get confusing. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the map amendment CR 23-03 to rezone a .73 acre parcel at the corner of US 52 and Carter Road from R20 residential to Carter Road conditional district, with the exception of removing unless waived by the adjoining property owner from item number two. This parcel is located in the primary growth area and other commercial and industrial zone parcels nearby. Also, Mr. Malden has agreed to follow the required conditions. Did I put that in the right spot?
You're fine to do that with one requirement, and that is that Mr. Malden agrees to that as well. Otherwise, you should not approve the change.
So should we ask Mr. Malden?
Mr. Malden, do you understand what he's asking to be put in?
You would need to buffer.
The lot that I already own?
The lot, yes.
Isn't this in the zoning area if it were Highway Business, just like this?
Yes, it is.
Can you explain that if you don't know?
The, well, the.
Bob coming like. Okay. So the zoning ordinance beyond, you know, ignoring this totally, this case and this situation, does have a provision in it that says that buffers are required unless a neighbor waives that. And from time to time, a neighbor will waive that. I'll give a quick example. It's CNC fire apparatus on 2427 in Indy Community, or Frog Pond, really downtown Frog Pond. There's, the backside of that backs up to a residential, there's a house there, nice house. And, but the owner of that business approached that property, owned the property and said, yep, I have no need or no desire to have a vegetative buffer or any buffer between me and you. And we got the letter. He didn't have to put up a vegetative buffer. But that's in the ordinance as a separate section of the ordinance that's there. We simply slipped it in here, just to kind of clarify and make sure it was out there. But that's, again, if you, I'd have to think about that a little bit. If you vote to, or make this motion to change that, take that out, that number two out, does the ordinance still apply where we allow that? But it's not zoned Highway Business, it's not zoned, it's a conditional district. So really, you've established what those conditions are. And if your conditions are, you got to have a buffer all the way around. That's fine. Once again, Mr. Malden would need to nod his head and agree to that because we can't approve, we can't move forward, basically, unless he is okay with, he has to agree to the condition.
Right. He owns the.
Go ahead.
He owns the property to the left.
He owns this parcel. I'm circling with the mouse now.
Yeah, he owns the property to the left of Carter Road.
The part at the bottom where the house is at.
That's not, that's not his.
Right.
So he would have, the way it's written now, he would have to border, put a, either six foot fence or vegetative over here.
I don't mind some type of a planting.
Right.
I don't, I don't care about the fence, but if you could do a Leland Cypress or something right there, just on that parcel.
The ordinance.
I think I'm a little confused here, but I think that, I'm just trying to get, wrap this around my head. On that side thing right now, it says he has to put something there. The only way he doesn't have to put something there currently if the, if the neighbor waives it.
Correct. So if this neighbor says.
Don't worry about it.
I don't, I don't, I don't need a buffer. I don't mind looking at mini storage warehouses, then it goes away. He, Mr. Malden owns this parcel, so, you know, obviously, he can waive himself, basically, if he chooses it. He may not choose it. He may decide, I'm going to build a nice house there and I need a buffer there. But that's, that's his choice to make, the way, the way it's written, the way it was proposed.
So I'm trying to ask what your amendment is trying to do, because right now it seems like the power is in the neighbor right now. Because the power, the neighbor can say, no, you don't have to do it to waive it. But he currently has to build something there unless the neighbor says no. Correct?
That is correct.
And I believe the neighbor would need to, wouldn't you require some one sentence letter that?
We'll, we've accepted emails as long as we know it's legitimate, yes.
What's your desire?
Yeah, Mr. Malden needs to agree if you want to proceed that way.
Confused as to what your, what your, Scott's amendment does.
Right now, it says, it says a vegetative or opaque fence buffer will separate any adjoining residential lots unless waived by the adjoining property owner. I just want to take the unless out.
No, but why would you?
But this is, this is conditional zoning. He has to meet all these conditions. And, again, I'm not asking for a fence. I'd just like to see, because if you go back to the picture, Bob. If he's going to, if he's going to clear cut that whole lot, you don't have anything at the back part of the area where it's green right there. You got some trees right beside the house, but you don't have anything in that back area right there. I'd just like to see a few little trees.
He's going to have to there, Scott. I mean, because that's adjoining, he doesn't own that lot. He owns this lot to the.
But if the property owner waives it, he don't have to.
Correct.
Right. Right. I'll just take that stipulation out.
If that property may not, he may want to say all that, but there he goes.
I agree that to the south, I would like the one to the east, the one that I own, it's like 140 feet on the road, I would like you to entertain the idea of not going that since I own that property.
And I'm okay with that. Yeah, I'm okay with that. But right now, yours is a residential lot, but there's nothing on it.
That is correct.
Where the house is, there's a house on that one. He's okay with that.
I'm going to offer this quick suggestion on any occupied adjoining residential lots. My thought is you add the word occupy, you take, a vegetative or opaque fence buffer will separate any occupied adjoining, or, I guess occupied is a good word, adjoining residential lot. And you could stop there, or you could keep, you know, if he says he doesn't want it, but...
I'm okay with occupied.
Okay. That should be okay.
Would you state that motion one more time? Commissioner Efer.
Vegetative or opaque fence buffer will separate any adjoining occupied residential lots. Here you.
Do we have a second? First and second. Any other discussion? We getting ready to vote? I believe I closed the public hearing. Y'all talked so long, I forgot. All right, all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Motion carries seven oh. I'm thinking it, Scott. All right. Thank you, Mr. Malden. Okay, Clint Swerengen, Tax Administrator, Board of Equalization and Review Appointments.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Happy to be with you tonight. I'm here for Board of Equalization and Review Appointments. The Board of Equalization and Review consists of five members, all of them appointed by this board. And they hear appeals for real and personal property from taxpayers when there's disagreements on value between my office and their opinion of value. There are currently two members who have terms that expire on December 31 of this year, and those members are Amanda Cody, the current chairman of that board, and Shannon Maynard. Both of those are serving their first term, and they are available for reappointment. Amanda Cody has applied to serve another four-year term. Shannon Maynard has not applied to serve another four-year term. The applications for Amanda Cody, and I think there's three other citizens who are interested in serving on the Board of Equalization and Review are attached. So I request the Board of Commissioners appoint two members of the Board of Equalization and Review for four-year terms expiring December 31, 2027. And I also would like to point out that GS 105 322A states the Board of Commissioners should also designate the chairman of the Board of Equalization and Review. And so upon these two new appointments, I would also ask that y'all name the chairman of the Board of ENR. I would like to report that Amanda Cody has never missed a meeting. She's been there every time, very dependable, very reliable. Shannon Maynard has not attended a meeting since December of 2021. So I have had no contact with him since December of 2021. I don't know where he's at. I don't even know if he still lives in his county anymore. But I can't get emails replied to, I can't get email, phone calls replied to, so I don't know where he's at. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Mr. Swerengen? No questions. Thank you, Clint.
Thank you.
Okay, we need to appoint two members to the Board of Equalization. And according to Mr. Swerengen, Amanda Cody's reapplied, and she's done a very good job. And you have some other applicants in your file.
Are we going to do these individually, or are we going to do them both at the same time?
Which way would you like to do them?
I make a motion to appoint Amanda Cody and Michael Hatley.
Okay, a motion for Amanda Cody and Michael Hatley. Okay, second by Commissioner Trump. All in, any other discussion? All in favor of Amanda and Mike Hatley? Please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven oh.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion, we appoint Amanda Cody as chair.
First and the second to appoint Amanda Cody as chairperson. Any discussion? All in favor of Amanda Cody? Chairperson, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. The next agenda item is an enhanced voluntary agriculture district application. Presenter is Amanda Kirby.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I am Amanda Kirby. I work with Soil and Water over at the Ag Center. I have one application on behalf of the Ag Advisory Board. It is an enhanced voluntary agricultural district for Stephen Irish and Amy Irish on Quiet Cove Lane. I don't know if you want me to explain what that is.
Yeah. Some of the newer commissioners, do y'all understand the benefits of this designation? Or do you have questions? Okay, no questions, thank you. We do need a motion. Commissioner Barbie, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second, Commissioner Hatley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next on the agenda is Riverstone Industrial Park Covenants. Presenter is. Presenter is Candace Louter, our EDC Director. Candace?
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board, come before you this evening to request your review and hopefully approval of development covenants for our Riverstone Industrial Park. You should have been provided in work session a revised copy. The only change that was made from the published covenants that were included in your agenda packet was that we changed the word business in paragraph two to industrial. We appreciate your consideration of this request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have about the covenants.
Any questions for Candace? Don't believe so, Candace, thank you.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure, the Board.
Make a motion to approve the covenants, as stated.
Okay. And first and the second, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Dolly Clayton, JCPC Chairperson.
Yes, so good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council reviews the needs of juveniles in our county who are at risk for delinquency or who have been adjudicated as undisciplined or delinquent. The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council reviews the resources that are available in the, in the community, prioritizes the community risk factors, and then determines what services can be gotten to address the problem. And so we also develop strategies to intervene, respond, and treat the needs of juveniles who are at risk for delinquency in our community. The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council is one of the larger boards that you as commissioners appoint. We have a total of 25 members. Currently, we have 21 current members, and I certainly appreciate Commissioner Hatley serving on the board for the council as well. Stanley County receives $215,334 every year that has to be distributed to programs who respond to requests for proposals to provide services for juveniles at risk for delinquency. In your packet, you have a revised plan, funding plan, that provides information relative to the redistribution as a result of one of the programs that we funded this year decided to close early. The Building Blocks Program of the City of Albemarle Parks and Rec decided to close out their programs and services on October 31st, 2023. As a result, they revised their budget to account for four months of program service operation. Their program was allocated $30,000 and they spent $11,155 during their four-month program operation. The unspent portion of their allocation is available to reallocated to other, to the other funded programs, if you approve that today. The reverted amount allocation would be $18,845. So I come to you today with the request that you, the Board of County Commissioners, accept the revised funding plan for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council with regards to the reversion of unspent funds by the Building Blocks Program for physical year 2324. And secondly, I request that you allow the JCPC, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, to request proposals from currently funded programs to reallocate the available funds to them, so that we can spend all this money that we've been allocated in our county. If we do not reallocate the funds, then those funds will be reverted back to the state.
Thank you, Dolly, oh, sorry.
Any questions of Dolly?
Yes, I have a question. Could you tell me a little bit more about the Buildings Block, Building Blocks Program and what went wrong, or why it...
So the Building Blocks Program was out of City of Albemarle Parks and Recreation, and they had a turnover in their staffing, and they were unable to get that position refilled. And so due to the loss of staffing, they weren't able to run the program. They were doing mentoring.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dolly. We have two items that I'm gonna seek a motion on. You all have the same handout I have. The first is to request the Board of County Commissioners to accept the revised funding plan for JCPC with regard to the revision of unspent funds by the Building Block Program for physical year 2324. Like to seek a motion for that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor for that particular motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The second part of this is there's a request that the Board of County Commissioners allow JCPC to request proposals from currently funds, fund programs to reallocate the available funds. I have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Next on the agenda is our county manager, Andy Lucas. He's gonna talk with us about opioid settlement funding appropriation resolution. Sheriff, I missed a sheriff. Sheriff, I'm sorry, but I don't have anything in my packet for you.
You don't?
But since you're the high sheriff, we're gonna let you talk anyway.
Good gracious. Well, good evening. Reason I come to y'all tonight is definitely out of the ordinary. I'm asking to be able to purchase eight Dodge Chargers six months early. And the total amount's $296,000, just a little over that. When I was at the Fall Conference, Sheriff's Conference, they told us, the vendors there were telling us, there was rumor, you wouldn't be able to get vehicles till late 2025, if you were lucky. I thought it was rumor, we had, still had six, seven months before we start putting in, submitting for vehicles. Well, when I got back, I got an email from a gentleman who said he was able to get his hands on Dodge Chargers, which, keep in mind, that Dodge is not making these vehicles anymore. 2023 was the last year. So from here on, it's SUVs, there are no more sedans, it's Explorers, Durangos, and Tahos. Well, I called the gentleman, he did confirm he had it, and I asked him about the rumor. He confirmed the rumor. Well, I had Captain Russell call two of the dealerships that we deal with primarily, Odleton and Performance. Both Dodge, Ford, and Chevrolet all said it will be late 2025 before you see any vehicles. Dodge went as far as saying, we're accepting orders, a limited number of orders, but we can't guarantee you when they'll be filled. So I don't know when and if we'll be able to get any. Speaking to Mr. Lucas, if y'all agree to this, I know it's six months early before the new budget, what I would like to do is purchase the vehicles, we'll put a tag and insurance on them, and we'll park them. Then I'll put into my budget to be able to outfit these vehicles, and we will not utilize them until after July 1, and we get them outfitted. I did do some, some cost analysis, from a Dodge Charger to what the new price of the Durangos would be, we're saving about 50, about $55,000. With the Ford Interceptor, it's right at $100,000, and with the Tahoe, it's almost $150,000. So if we can go ahead and get these, we are saving, we're saving the county a nice sum of money.
Any questions for the sheriff? You said you will not put them in service until when?
Till after July 1st, till the new budget year starts. I won't, because one, right now, I don't, I might be able to outfit a couple of them with some money, but I'll just wait. We'll wait, I'll put in the budget to be able to outfit the vehicles, equip them, and then we'll start after the new budget year.
Any other questions? Are these...
I do have one, you know, it's not good for those things to sit very long.
And that's something we'll, we'll, we'll take care of. We're not gonna let them go bad, that's for sure.
Take them on a test drive every now and then.
Every now and then.
Sheriff, you say these are 2023s or 2024?
2023 is the last year Dodge made the Charger, so this is it. There will be no more. And that's the thing, with the strike going on, we have no idea if there's even, there's no talk of a sedan being made. Everything is going to an SUV now.
Any other questions?
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Sheriff. Sorry I overlooked you.
Hey, it's okay.
I make a motion to approve the 2425 replacement vehicles in 2324 to ensure delivery.
First and the second, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Now I'm ready for you, Captain Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First item that I'm here to speak with you tonight is opioid settlement funding appropriation resolution for our community paramedic program. The community paramedic program has assisted with post overdose response for the past four years, and they help individuals with opioid disorder, mental health disorders, and other chronic medical conditions. We have specially trained community paramedics that can work with those folks, and so they get called out when there is an overdose, and then they help sort of follow up with those folks and try to transition them to being, from being addicted to being in recovery. They sought $110,188.50 from January 1st to 2024 to June 30th, 2024, to continue those efforts, but they also wanted to add a division chief, and that would allow them to enhance communication with community partners, foster relationships with community partners, and allow for increased time with difficult patients. As you know, the county's currently going through a strategic planning process to better facilitate recommendations for opioid use funding, and that includes a task force that's consistent with representatives from law enforcement, behavioral health, human service organizations, education, nonprofit, those with lived experience, and so that task force will be assessing, yeah, is prioritizing needs, and they'll be, will be issuing, or that task force will be issuing a request for proposals based on the priorities in the spring of 2024, and then they'll be vetted, and then it'll be brought to you as part of the budget process in 2024, 25, in May of June. And so with that said, given that we're so close to that process sort of coming out, staff is just recommending the scope of services that we currently provide, one paramedic, one community paramedic, and the one full-time peer support specialist, that that, that continue to receive funding for the next six months, and that is at an amount of $69,386 from June, or from January 1, 2024, through June 30th of 2024. And that would then allow them, as we go through the strategic planning process, to reapply for the full amount for a 12-month period as part of the formal process, and it'll be embedded into your budget process. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for County Manager Lucas?
I make a motion we approve the funding request.
The staff recommended one, or they're, the 69386 for the...
The one that you recommended, to bring it in, to bring it in the line with everyone else.
Yeah, yeah.
To bring it into...
The resolution, 69386, yeah.
Your motion is to approve the opioid settlement fund resolution, seeking allocation of $69,386 to the county's community paramedic division from January 1, 2024 to June 30, 2024. Do we have a second?
Our guys at EMS, they, they go above and beyond, I mean, they really work hard at this, and they really set a model for the whole state, and I'm really proud of those
Any other comments before we vote? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. County Manager Lucas, you're still up.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The second opioid settlement funding appropriation resolution that's before you this evening is for URE Harm Reduction Initiative, Grace Place Open Hands. They've also assisted with peer support and other opioid disorder recovery support services for the past four years. They were involved with the HERSA grant and going back, and they've been a key component in the county's efforts to mitigate opioid use disorder and improve our, improve outcomes. Their request for continued settlement funding is supported by members of our Health, DSS, and EMS staff. They were actually seeking $39,527.50 between January 1, 2024, and June 30, 24, to continue their existing peer support efforts, which was one full-time peer support and one part-time peer support, but their request was for an additional part-time peer support specialist. Again, because we're going through the strategic planning process, county staff is recommending that the scope of services, just the one full-time peer support and the one part-time peer support specialist remain in place for the period of January 1 through June 30, and that they could request their full, that full request as part of next year's process. And so it's recommended that the Board consider appropriation through this funding authorization of $31,395 from January 1, 2024 to June 30, 2024. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I do believe there, Mr. Bob Harmon from URE Harm Reduction is here this evening, if you have specific questions about their program.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the staff recommended funding, I would think it's $31,500.
$31,395.
$395 for January until June, to get everything into rotation.
I've got some questions before we go that far, though. I want to talk about the needle exchange program.
Hold on, there's a motion, we have to, I think we have to have a second before we talk this guy.
Do we have a second to Peter's motion?
For, this time?
Discussion.
I want to ask about what's going on with the needle exchange program, because if we're gonna fund that, we gotta do it in a manner that's gonna be safe for the whole environment that's over there, and I don't think that's happening right now from the complaints we hear from the community. So I don't know if that's a question for the director, or...
Yeah, I'm gonna defer to Bob on that. I do know that this funding won't specifically fund, the, this funding goes specifically to the peer support and the part-time peer support, but the county's funding is actually used as a, as matching funds for a grant that they get for the syringe exchange program. So they are sort of inextricably tied together, and so I will defer to Mr. Harmon and see if he can answer your questions.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, your question, more precise, is...
So what are we doing about the needle exchange program and the issues that the community's having over there with the dirty needles, and it's not really an exchange program, to my understanding?
No, it's, the way that's written in the North Carolina statute is there cannot be a limitation such as one-for-one. I mean, that could be changed, but it'd be, take, changing it with the state of North Carolina under that existing statute. We have done, done some work to try to make sure we do that better, we have cut down the amount that we have been passing out, we are encouraging higher and higher for people to bring them back, we have seen an increase in that. We are patrolling the areas more, we're going to West Albemarle Baptist Church, patrolling their property, we're doing it over at the Main Street Methodist and all our property, kind of looking to make sure nobody's leaving anything out there. We are highly, we are aware of that concern. Now, what we are working with here does go with our peer support, which they are there to... to work with the folks and get them into rehabilitation programs, to help them work through the life programs, transport them to Otis County because there's no rehab or detox facilities in Stanley County. We do take them where they need to go and make sure they get the treatment they need. That's the main focus of what we're doing there. The, we have been working hard on taking care of people that are having overdoses. We pass out a lot of naloxone, which reverses the effects of opioids, and we have cut down the amount of EMS of responses and also ED responses since we've been working with that since 2020.
I don't dispute the good things you're doing over there, by no means. You're doing great things. My only concern is that needle exchange program. How many do you give them at a time when one person comes? How many needles, syringes do you give them?
We were doing 50, but we've cut it back to 30. We've cut them back on that, and we haven't had any complaints without them working on that lower number.
30 syringes at a time?
Yes, sir.
Does that not seem excessive, though, for one person?
Well, it's over, they don't have to come every week. They might, some of them come once a week, some of them come every other week. It's not, they don't come every, we're only open two days a week. We're open Tuesdays for three hours and on Friday for three hours, and I take that back and for one hour on Wednesday mornings.
But give them that many syringes, how are we helping them get off? Or how does that help get off the, the drugs or the opioids or?
The syringes not to get them off, the syringes mainly is to do safe, be safe with it. What we ran into when we were approached by the Health Department to consider doing this project is the way they were using them. They're using, reusing them, they're passing them around, they're using dirty needles, and that was creating a problem with hepatitis, HIV, and other, and endocarditis and other diseases that were bloodborne that was being spread at that point in time. The main part of that is, one, keep these folks alive, so we're not sending them to the hospital with these various diseases, which is really an expensive process once they have this. That's the sense of the needle exchange part of it. When we get them in there and work with them this way, then we are able to expose them to the peer support, to show them the benefits of working through it. All of our peer support people were where these folks were at one point in their lives. They were, they were users, they were living on the streets, some of them were trafficked, but they know what these people are going through, and their idea is to work with them, get them in there and working with them. Again, the syringes are not working to get them off. The syringes gets them in there, keeps them alive, keeps them from contracting these diseases. All the taxpayers would then be paying for once they were in there. And then the idea is to use that, work with them when they come in, when they come in, our peer supports talk with them, our staff spends time with them. It's not just a, here you go, see you later. We work with them when they come in, discuss things with them, get to know what's going on in their lives, and try to put it where they can see there is hope. There are ways to get out of this, and that's what we're doing. We're trying to be very conscious neighbors and making sure we do get as many back as possible by controlling the neighborhood, encouraging them. We give them out safe containers, stick safe, so we can put them in there, they're not going to get stuck, they're in there, they bring them back to us in those containers. That way they're not, you know, just dropping them or anything else. We do give them in containers every time they come to see us, and they should, they are supposed to, and most of them do, is bring them back to us afterwards.
Are, you spoke to the general statute saying it's not a one for one?
No, it's not a one.
So does the general statute say that you can give five, or 20, or 100, or what's the general statute say about that?
General statute quotes as that give what would be their need, and they're not, and we cannot do anything to restrict that need. Some, some organizations give 100, some organizations give a whole case. And the idea on that part is, one, if they're going out there, if they're giving them someone else and they're using them too, that's another person that's not using our dirty needle or anything. That's the idea for the generosity on that. And we have cut back from where we were from talking to some of the people in the community. We have cut back to try to cut back on that problem. And I believe it's showing up that, well, we, we haven't had nearly as many found around that we know of. We've gone over to West Baptist, we've walked it, we've found none over there, we haven't found any over at Main Street Methodist. Our property's been clean also. So the idea is to make sure, to keep them alive, like I'm saying. That's why they give out so many. If they don't use 30, maybe they give some to someone else, and they're using a clean one instead of a used one. That was the spirit of the law, of the statute that's written by the state of North Carolina, to get them out in the community.
Sir, can I ask you a question? What can you do to reas, right here? What can you do to reassure us? I was in that meeting.
Yeah.
And I think things have got better. It's a shame that we had to have the meeting.
I agree.
And we got to that point. So what can you do to reassure that we're not going to get back to that?
Well, we're doing everything we can. We're going to keep on, keep on encouraging. I can't say that somebody won't drop one. I mean, that's just something that could happen. Even if we weren't there, anyone that would be out in the community anyway that was using, they could be wanting to drop it. It's just hard to say. We're doing everything we can to make sure they stay safe and letting the people know, encouraging them heavily that they need to get them back to us. We have seen an uptick in the amount that are coming back. So we're hoping that's made a difference again, giving out fewer and fewer. So, you know, in our discussion there, we went through a lot of topics that day, and I'm hoping that we are making a difference. I understand the community's concern. We're trying to be good neighbors, we're going to keep on doing that. Now, like I said, I, we can't have complete control just because people do careless things. We're going to do everything we make, we can to make sure they do bring them back.
Well, there's kids involved here, so, you know.
I would definitely agree. I understand, I'm a grandfather and a father, so I definitely understand that concern. And like I said, we have seen a difference and seen less in the community now, and we're hoping it stays that way. And we, like I said, we cut it back, seeing what's happened. We had any, haven't had complaints from our people that come in to see us about the numbers being smaller, so we feel that was a positive thing there.
How does a person get on this needle exchange? I mean, do y'all give needles out to anybody that comes into your building?
The ones that come, we do, and that's pretty much, again, the way it is written in the statute there. We can't hold back services. I mean, if they come in from Montgomery County, which we have a few that have come in, but majority of it is Stanley County. And the whole idea of the, again, the statute is to knock down the diseases, because it's called harm reduction, and that way it's trying to get, to keep these people alive. And us as being a, really this organization, our thoughts are, one, we want to keep them alive, so hopefully at some point in time they find a way back to Christ. That's really what we want to see. We're trying to keep them alive for that, and we've had a fair number of people that's done that. But we just want to mainly work with them, keep them safe, keep the community safe. And again, like we said, with the naloxone going out, that does a lot of overdose reversals out there that keeps people alive. I have a handout, did not bring it with me tonight, but Wendy Grocock with the Health Department did a study over what the North Carolina line was predicted, what we would be doing in the amount of opioid overdose deaths, and what our line actually was. And by looking at that chart, I may have a copy, if I do, I can bring it to you. In that period of time, from night, from 2019 to 2023, there's been 53 lives saved in Stanley County because of overdose reversals and harm reduction have done that. Now, 53 is an estimate, if it's five people, that's a big, great deal. If it's 10, if it's 20, if it's one person, that person's still walking because they're able to go through the process and not over, not overdose and die.
Can I make one suggestion?
I'm sorry?
Could, could you look at cutting that number back again?
The number?
Of needle exchanges? Because I don't want to incentivize people from other communities coming to our community just because we're giving out needles.
Oh, they, about everything, but I said, we get a few from Montgomery, very middle, very minimal. Cabarrus has their own program, Rowan started theirs, Mecklenburg has theirs, Union has theirs, and so everyone around us basically has theirs.
I, I got a, I got a question. Any idea with the statistics or anything, like the person that comes in to get a needle, how often do they shoot up a day? Is there a statistic on that or anything?
It varies from person to person. As for an average, I do not know.
Representative Sasser, I think you want to add something?
Oh.
Okay.
No, I appreciate what y'all, y'all do down there, and I've done a lot of reading on this, and with being on the health board, which I'm, I will be leaving. You guys do a good job, and the harm reduction does a good job, and, you know, it gets to be pretty successful. Y'all do a lot more than just needle exchanges.
Yes, sir. We also, we feed breakfast five days a week for the folks in the community. We serve dinner one night a week. We have, we're doing two nights, but with funding, we had to cut back on our Thursday, hoping to get that back started again. We also work with them, give them a place to come, we give them bibles, we help them get their government phones, we help them get IDs, social security cards, we help them get birth certificates. We got a wide range of services to work with the folks that are really struggling. And a lot of us, when they come in, they see it as community. When they come in with the meals, they stick around, they talk. We, we have praise music playing, we give a message before our dinners, and our breakfast is a short message then, just trying to plant that seed of what's going on, trying to get them to see that there is hope out there. Because these folks that are out there, they are, their world is dark. It's hard for us to even imagine what world these folks are in. And we try to give them that little bit of light, let them see that there is hope, that they can do better, which is what our peer supports mainly work with, because as I said, they come from that community, they were in that community, and they've been sober anywhere from, I think it's 11 years to seven years, and the lowest one was four years sober. They've gone through, had the training to be peer support and know how to work with them and help them get the help they need.
And I know reading on this, there's a bunch, I know there are pros and cons. Which one the cons is, is them dropping, them dropping needles out? A lot of the pros are they're helping to prevent HIV, hepatitis, and things like that, and you don't want that in the community either. But overall, everything, I've done the research on this, it seems to be more pros than cons, and I appreciate what y'all do, because not a lot of people are willing to get down in the ditches and, and help people like this. And I appreciate, I think you, County Manager Lucas said, is your progress has been supported a lot by the Health Department and the paramedics and stuff like that? Yeah. But I, I thank y'all very much for doing, I know, and, and no one wants needles on the ground. I mean, can we agree that, but there's bigger issues involved in addiction.
Commissioner Crump has a question.
I just want, I want to say thank you for coming and, and talking more about your program. I've done some research and just looked online to see some of the services that y'all have given. I have not, I regret that I haven't. I haven't come by to see for myself, but I would like to do that, and I thank you for all the work that you're doing. I'm, I have an internal struggle about that needle exchange program, a real internal struggle, but I do hear the pros that you're talking about. And so, you know, I, I had even been of, of the thinking, could, could you do this program without the needle exchange? But I'm not so sure I'm of that thought either. I don't know where I am on it, and I'm not the expert, and you're in it. But I, I do want to make it clear to our, to our residents, to the people that live here in Stanley County, that our local dollars are not spending any money on this, on the needles. And I think there's a misconception, and that needs just to be put out there so that people understand that's the case. And the money that we are allocating through this grant, through the the opioid settlement funding, that also isn't paying for those needles. You're using that as a match from a different source. Could you tell us the source of where the funding is coming from for that needle exchange?
This vital strategies, a nonprofit out in New York that, pretty much, they work with the people that are receiving opioid, opioid funding to help enhance the programs. Up until that point, which was beginning of 2023, we were having to do it all out of just a little fundraising we had to do. Make that, if that's made it work, and take those fundings, we're using that to provide more of the other funding that we're able to make things work with. But no, not a dime of what we use on any of our programs comes from the taxpayers of Stanley County. We don't use any Stan, any taxpayer money at all from Stanley County.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we vote? Any comments, Representative Sasser?
Y'all go ahead, and then I'll take two minutes.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to approve opioid settlement funding resolution seeking to allocate $31,395 to Open Hands Doing Business As You Are a Harm Reduction Initiative from January 1, 2024 to June 30, 2024. That's what we're voting on. All those in favor of this amount, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. No opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Representative Sasser, would you like to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Didn't come to speak, but this is kind of my wheelhouse, my passion. Just bring you up to date a little bit. First of all, I want to agree with Commissioner King. Our EMS and Bob's people do a fantastic job. They're, they're pretty much the poster child for the state, doing it right, doing it the right way. And let me tell you, treating HIV and treating hepatitis is a very expensive process, so all those diseases we can prevent. And the issue here is not as much drug abuse as it is mental illness. And that's the biggest one health problem we have in this country, not just in this county or this state. State spent $800 million towards mental health in this, out of this last budget. So us and all our brilliance back in the 70s decided that we couldn't lock people up that were mentally ill. We had to integrate them back into society, to our communities, so now we have them living in tents. So we have to figure out some way to reverse that. We can only help these people if we have contact with them. And most people, most of us people don't want to deal with people that are mentally ill. But there's a lot of things that's going on. I'll, I'll say this, and then I'll sit down. The US Supreme Court today heard a case about the Sekular family. And no reason y'all would know who that is, but they're the, the family that owned Purdue Pharmaceuticals. And they were excluded for many personal suits because the, the corporation, LLC that they owned. Well, the federal government, there was a $6 billion settlement that we thought we would already have money from. To tell you how much money that is, Stanley County would get twice as much money every year as they're getting now. The legislature, instead of getting $10 million a year to spread across the state, we would get $20 million a year. But the federal government took that settlement to court, all the way to the US Supreme Court, because the Sekular family is sitting there with $50 billion that they've made off OxyContin, telling everybody that it was long-term opioid, and it wasn't addicted and all that stuff. So there's more money coming, coming your way. Just to say one thing, number one on my list, soon as we get that money in '25, is a detox center in, in Montgomery County, because we don't have one close. There's one in, in Union County, but it can't take care of Union County and, and Mecklenburg County. So just wanted to give you a report, and thank you for, for all you're doing. And I'm glad you made the point that this is all opioid settlement money from drug companies and drug stores and distributors and all that kind of stuff. It's not North Carolina taxpayer money, and it's not Stanley County taxpayer money. So God bless you, thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Representative Sasser, and we appreciate what you do in Raleigh to help Stanley County and Montgomery County. Okay, next agenda item, County Manager Andy Lucas. Strategic planning retreat, we need to pick a date, I believe.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Yeah, pick a date, I'm giving you four Fridays in February. And then just sort of reaffirm that you would like to have that facilitated. I have reached out to the Central Indiana Council of Governments that did it last year, and they're agreeable to do it again. And they were, they were reasonable, and so and, and we budgeted for a facilitator, but wanted to reaffirm that and then get a date, and we'll be, we'll be good to go.
February 12th, I can get off, that's a non, it's a teacher workday, so I could.
You mean February 2nd?
Hold on, hold on, let me look again.
Okay, you got Friday, February 2nd, Friday, February 9th, Friday, February 16th, and Friday, February 23rd. Hope you don't see a shadow. Peter Ho.
No, it's a Monday. Twelfth's a Monday.
Pick one, and I'll make it work. But, but this Groundhog say?
Go sixteen.
Friday after Valentine's Day. Let's, let's, everybody okay with the sixteen?
Sixteenth works for me.
Sixteenth. How about it, Brandon? Y'all good with the sixteen?
Yeah, we'll do it at the same place, as long as you're okay with that.
Okay, so, so we need a motion to approve.
June berry, yeah, yeah.
Holding a one-day planning retreat to be facilitated by Central Indiana at a location to be determined later, and the date is February sixteenth. Do we have a second?
Yeah, we'll start at nine and go to three thirty-four. And provide continental breakfast and lunch, afternoon snack.
All right, got a motion, a second, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Motion carries seven zero. Next is the consent agenda. You all have had time to look at it.
Second.
I appreciate y'all being fast. That's good. Okay. Motion first and second, end of discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven oh. Okay. Comments from Commissioners? I'm gonna start with Commissioner Hatley. Okay, thank you. Vice Chairman Barbie.
Congratulations, and I don't have anything else to say, it's been a long meeting, so I'm good.
Commissioner Eifert.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Louder, I'm looking forward to the EDC appointment, thank you so much. Congratulations, Commissioner Lawhan and Vice Chairman Barbie. Peter, thank you so much for the nomination. I gave my word a while back to Mr. Barbie that I would support him, and my parents told me a long time ago, you, you word is your bond, so, but again, thanks for that, and again, I hope...
Well, you could have told me.
Well, I certainly appreciate it, but I hope everyone out there has a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Commissioner King.
I just want to thank Commissioner Eifert for his last year's services there. Chair, appreciate all you've done for us, and look forward to Mr. Lawhan being in your chair. Thank you for everything.
Commissioner Shuta.
I'm gonna say maybe Commissioner King will agree with me. If they base building schools on how many kids are in the street getting candy at a parade, we need three schools in Oakboro. Oh my God, there were so many kids out there, weren't there? But anyway, no, it's been fun going to these Christmas parades out there, and I wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Commissioner Crump.
Ditto on the thanks and congratulations.
And I warn you now, Vice Chairman Barbie, you're gonna have to fill in for me come the first meeting in August, so. Hopefully I'll be healthy. No, no. Hopefully we, I will try my best to do as good a job as Commissioner Eifert, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve as the chairman of Stanley County Commissioners again. Thank you, and I wish all the staff here and all the citizens a Merry Christmas. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn. Second motion. Adjourned.